Okay, we're back in session. Next on the agenda, we have an update on our TAP Sidewalk Project from KB Partners. So, welcome.
Hi.
Where should I be?
Right there is fine.
That's fine.
Yep.
Use your indoor voice. The chart back you use your indoor voice too.
Yeah.
So Mike, if you remember, I sent the Selectmen and Preliminary Designs that we've sent to, I believe, sent to the state.
Yep.
I have a copy for you. This is what they're looking at.
Yeah. So the preliminary plans went to DOT in December, 18th or 21st, something like that. We had talked to DOT and they almost lost the comments back so we proceed by February 1st. Now it's March 1st.
Okay.
So these things happened.
Yep.
But I did talk to the project manager today and he would say by March 1st, he expects to have all the comments in from all the different divisions. It took probably about half a dozen or seven of them.
Okay.
I don't know where the comments are but...
Okay.
But we'll wait and see. But he did say in his letter that he expects that when he provides those comments back to us, they will come with a approval to proceed to the next level of design, which is good.
Excellent.
The environmental process coincidentally wrapped up today.
Oh, nice.
Final sign off on the NEPA process, which is a federal process that you need to go through. So that's all set.
Yep.
Couple of the things that have changed since the last time I presented plans to back at the public hearings. Based on comments, well not changed, but could change. So the comments from DOT regarding crosswalks, the crosswalk at School Street, the crossing School Street to the park, this should be eliminated and combined with the one at the rec center.
Okay.
I take back on that. So people use it all the time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hopefully they don't agree with that, but we'll have to wait to see the next round of comments.
Did they have a rationale for that?
Yeah.
Crosswalks are too close together. We thought it'd be better to have two crosswalks in one location.
Okay.
That's a pretty typical comment you get from DOT.
Okay.
I can tell you that whenever the school has a game or whatnot, they march the kids right down the hill and cross that crosswalk.
Yeah.
I've heard that from the state too.
Yep.
It's important. I mean, if they insisted, if they really feel strongly that it shouldn't be there, if they're going to do a town, they'll still let you put it there, but they'll say you're responsible for it.
Okay.
Because I don't think it's a big burden since you're pretty much responsible for it anyway.
Right, okay. Thank you.
That's kind of what they'll do. And the other one was the crosswalk at the end of Gordon Street, the common main street. They thought it should be eliminated as well.
What?
We talked about that. It gets close to the other one in front of the common.
Common man, yeah.
So they're still close, they thought one should be eliminated. So if you use the common man one all the time for the parking lot on the side of the other, the kids coming across the school.
Both of them are.
So they really thought both of those should be there as well.
Okay.
So we've not responded to them. I'm pointing this out because they may come back and say, we have to come back and talk to them about that. They may say they have to come out. I'm not sure what they'll say, but those are points that they asked us to do, something that we didn't do.
Okay.
Pretty much the only other thing that they asked us to do that we didn't do was the, they made a comment on the flashing beacons at the crosswalks. The business said if you're going to put one in for one mid-block crosswalk, put it in for all.
Got to do the other ones?
Which was, you know, like 20,000 bucks a piece. They had us pretty quick.
Yeah, for sure.
Lot to think about that one. So basically, the argument I made back to them was that, look, the crosswalk in front of the rec center is really the one that's the most important.
That's right.
Really focus the visibility. I don't think we talked about it before.
Yeah.
And they haven't responded yet, but we'll find out on our own first what they think.
Okay.
So that also gives them, when you come into this town, it lets you know to slow down.
Just slow down.
People ignore that flashing yellow overhead, but if you've got flashing yellow right in front of you.
High level.
Congested area, slow down.
I was thinking about that a little bit.
Yeah.
They dig their heels in on that and say, well, this is all or nothing.
Yeah.
Alternative to that may be a driver feedback, some of the speed limit on it, possibility.
Okay.
It's expensive, knows that you can put it pretty much anywhere.
Okay.
Just a thought, you know.
Okay.
Talk about where that should be, if it makes sense. And talk to the police chief about it, what do they think as well.
Okay.
It's a possibility.
Yep.
At this point, those are kind of the, things are kind of up in the air.
Okay.
I don't know what to respond to. Bring them up.
But nothing insurmountable at this point?
Well, nothing that you can't take out of the box.
That's right, right.
So we'll see what they say.
Okay.
The other changes, we did add some drainage. We added a new drainage line between the post office and Dollar General.
Okay.
I think in the original plans, we planned to just basically replace catch basins. There'll be the existing pipe there. DOT reviewed that pipe, so it's, we'll beat that pipe, you have to replace it. So then DOT came and said, well, what we'll do is we'll provide catch basins, we'll provide the pipe, but you have to install it.
Okay.
Catch basin and pipe should be 35% of the cost and 65% of the cost gets added to the project.
Okay.
We added another piece of drainage from the end of School Street. There's a drainage problem now that the public works explained to me. It's just another 700 feet of pipe as well.
Okay.
So we had the original drain line that came pretty much from the common man all the way down. It was an original plan. We have these two drain lines. So I was curious today how much all that added up to. So we had all the drainage up and the patching that goes with it, it's about $170,000.
Wow.
So a lot of money.
Wow.
So there's really no way around it.
Yeah.
The thing is, if you look at, you know, where the budget is having problems, it's primarily in the drainage.
Okay.
Well, isn't that what we've been talking about the last couple of months?
Drainage in town.
Yeah.
And the drainage, none of the things that DOT are asking for are unreasonable. They're all things that need to be done.
Yeah.
My opinion of the state, they should do more of it.
Yeah, they should.
We agree, yeah.
When we first sat down and talked about this, we discussed the issue where as across from Industrial Way, where the factory is located, as far as 18-wheelers being parked there and whatnot. And I just can't help but notice they're telling us that that's one of the places where we're having drainage issues. Do you think that that's compromised by having vehicles parked on top of them?
Which part of them are?
Right across from Industrial Drive.
So on the Dollar General side in that area?
Yeah, after Dollar General.
I think probably not the loading of trucks is the problem.
Okay.
The problem is probably the pipes, it's a metal pipe, it's like 50 years old.
Oh, okay, so it's compromised. Okay.
Yes, and those pipes are very shallow. And these pipes are going to be very shallow as well, because there's just no way to get it down deeper without chasing them all the way down the end. But I don't think they're crushed from vehicles being on top of them. It's just old and rotty.
Interior.
They rusted out.
Excuse me, could I go back to the crosswalk?
Yeah.
What is the, is there a, do they have like a law or regulation? You said they're too close together. Do they have, like, it has to be so many feet?
They look like 300 feet or more.
300 feet or more?
There's not a law or regulation, it's kind of a rule of thumb.
A guideline, a guideline, yeah.
Okay. I just wondered, because we have one further up across from Bob Scherf Line. It's not in the sidewalk project, but I didn't know if maybe we could switch out.
Well, I'd say, crosswalk in general, you don't want to have a whole bunch of them.
A whole, that's why I was thinking maybe we could take that one out and, you know, maybe offer them to take that one out and leave the other two that are closer.
I think if you, Selectmen decide that those crosswalks are important, should say, I don't think they'll make you pay.
Okay, good, okay.
With DOT, unfortunately, what you get from DOT is you get one group saying one thing, another group saying another thing.
Yeah.
Exactly what I expected.
Okay.
So when that happens, that's kind of good.
Yeah.
If it makes the most sense to go by it.
Okay.
So whether they ask you to do that, I don't know. In a week, we'll know. And I can report back to Charlie when we go back to you for what they said.
Okay.
Thank you.
So with the drainage and all the patching and everything else, of course, the funding is over budget regardless of the program. Exactly how much, I don't know. We can work with public works and, in public work and in DOT, try to find out, make up that crosswalk. I think DOT said they can probably increase the funding. We left about $40,000.
Okay.
There was, you have $30,000 in right-of-way costs, which are never anywhere near that.
Okay.
So we ran that money and reallocated into construction as opposed to any way.
Okay.
And then public works was going to do some of the work as well.
Okay.
A big chunk, which also takes some, a big chunk of that all, not a big chunk, takes some of it.
Good, okay.
So I think when all that's said and done, it ends up, still end up, there's a shortfall. And honestly, I hate to give you a number, but I'll give you one anyways.
Okay. We won't hold you to it.
I think it's in the $80,000.
Okay.
But I'm not really sure.
Yeah.
Once we get the final comments in, a little more detail, we'll do exactly what DOT is going to offer and how that all shakes out.
Yeah.
And then a more detailed number for it.
Yeah.
Now, your right-of-way costs, that would be anything that would incur any easements or change? The only reason why I ask is I keep going back to this spot here with the mobile gas station. Who would take care of that? Is that some of the state takes care or we take care of? I know it's our main street, but it's there.
Get easements, you mean, or?
Well, if you're taking away their driveway, they're probably going to have some.
It looks like it's still on there.
No, not one of them. It goes right over it.
Yeah.
It says they're going to strip it down and replace it with four inches of long and seated.
Remember, we asked them to, where do you look at that?
One of the things that we'll do from that property owner is easement, so once we...
Well, that's going to cost you money.
Well, there are things that we could do where that easement would not be required. So DOT, last time I was at DOT, we talked about that. They often go back and research what the driveway.
Yeah, I remember that. We talked about that.
Were. They haven't got back to us yet. Now we'll follow up on that.
Okay.
And the easement, the easement's based on the value. Like, we're working with our assessors already that, we're not just going to say, oh, here's $200,000, give us the piece of land.
Right.
No, it's based off of what is assessed value.
Yeah.
Well, the assessed value, and then it's the value of that piece of property you're using. So they're only having a temporary easement, just upgrading.
Right.
So they usually will take that piece or that strip in the front, put a value on that, and it's like 10% of that.
Because that piece in question, you're taking away the driveway altogether. It's not a temporary easement.
The driveway that is not on private property, the driveway is completely on public property, well within the right of way.
Okay. My other question about easement is, I see here a property owned by Mrs. Stacy Lucas. You have it marked as a temporary easement. Now, as far as that being a business, is that something, is there a timeframe as far as temporary? Is that length of?
It's a duration of the project, which will be...
I just don't want someone coming to the town claiming hardship because they can't operate their business.
Well, the driveway will never be shut down except for when it's paved and maybe for a few minutes.
Okay.
They'll always be accessible.
And I know that's your onsite parking.
Yep. At no point will any of the drivers be completely shut off, except for maybe a very short period of time, they're upgrading it and paving it, but that's it. And now they'll just be, they'll work with the property owner during construction to make sure it's not a problem. It's not going to be for hours if anything.
Okay.
Now probably only occasionally. So to access all the properties that require them, this project, they'll make it happen.
Okay.
And if they're temporary easements, or whether it's a business or whether it's a private property, the values of these are going to be really low.
Good.
It'll typically be a few hundred dollars. So I see they're committing about 10 blocks, which is not crazy, so.
Nice, nice.
If they come in really low and suggest that, you know, a lot of Selectmen will do is you'll just set a minimal value.
Yeah.
So instead of, you know, saying here's $9, it's a decent easement. You know, maybe $200 or something like that, just a little more science. And DOT has reviewed that one in the past.
Okay.
So it's not ridiculous.
Sounds good.
Ridiculous number.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, hopefully, you know, this is going to go to construction sometime.
Well, schedule wise, I'm hoping by the summer.
Oh, nice. Excellent. Very exciting. Yeah, I know, I know.
It is.
I only control what I want.
I got it.
We're waiting for you today.
But that's optimistic.
Yeah.
So what I do is when I get comments back from DOT, I expect them to come out by March 1st. By March 24th, I'm going to have final plans, everything ready for review, I guess.
Okay.
It takes me a couple, three weeks to get these things done.
Yeah.
And it's back in my hands right away.
Okay.
But after that, then they'll have to review it and turn it around and get it back to me. And they usually ask for a more similar act of that, like a PS and E settlement.
Yep.
And then after that, then they'll authorize construction. So assuming there aren't a lot of, I guess, difficult issues in the comments that come back, we have to, it's going to work out.
Yep.
We turn this over quickly, and then we should go through it after that. The key, we're getting it right of way done.
Okay, excellent.
So if we get the right of way done quickly, it should be a quick process, assuming you can get in touch with these people.
Mm-hmm.
And then you get the appraisals done, you have that information, etc.
We're very similar to them.
Wonderful.
It should be, that can be a holdup, that can be a quick process, but we keep on talking.
Okay.
So the goal is that we get this submitted by March, and then get the next submitted in, and have her ready to go, so advertising for the bids hopefully in May.
Yep.
Nice.
Fabulous.
So I can really control what I can do.
I understand that, Mike. Thank you so much. Keep us posted. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone, anyone got any questions?
Okay, I will open this up, even though it's a work session. Go ahead.
When he says, yeah, summer, will you be digging in the ballpark area around July?
It's possible, but I'm not sure.
We have a big 4th of July celebration.
I would be surprised if they're off the warden before July 4th.
Okay, all right. That's good. Good question, Kendall.
Good question.
Yeah, that could...
I think we asked him that last year when he came in. He's, I think you said at the time, you probably thought fall.
Yeah.
Or late summer.
Yeah.
Or August.
After the 4th would be...
At this point, being entirely contracted on board, ready to go by July 4th.
Yeah.
Pretty optimistic.
Okay.
If that's the case, and if there's that event or any other events that are important to town, we'll incorporate that into the contract. And we just want to have to watch out for those.
All right.
So they don't mess with what we're doing.
Great.
Are they just going down the opposite side of the ballpark?
Yep.
And wouldn't really affect us terribly?
No, but we don't want, you know, construction going on, so. Yeah, good point. We'll make sure that it's taken care of.
If there are sidewalks, I think a lot of people walking around.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll make sure the sidewalks are still paved. If they're not paving or there's ground, they'll make sure it's smooth and people aren't going to turn around or something like that.
Thousands of people.
What's that?
Thousands of people.
That's great. He needs to make the sidewalks a bit smoother, he has been up here.
Yeah.
That's very important, it's a typical requirement in a contract.
Okay. Great, thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome to stay, but you probably want to get going.
I'll probably pass on that off.
I understand that completely. Okay, we have the 4th of July committee here. As I explained to Kendall, we have a very busy work session, so we want to keep this as brief as possible, so if, you know, we can introduce the issues and we can meet again. But what is it you want to come to us about?
I have copies here of the field performance contracts from last year.
Okay.
And the vendor contract from last year, so you can see comparison. Our food truck vendor contract this time is three pages long.
Oh, wow.
As compared to that, it goes into great detail.
Okay.
These were discussed at our board meetings, and they were submitted, copies of them to the town. So the town has had these contracts in advance.
Have you seen them? No, I haven't, but I assume you have, Charlie?
I'll have to see what it looks like.
Okay.
Sorry, I got to think, and this is a vendor, vendor. I watched the video from the last meeting, and I was very concerned with what I saw happen. There were comments about gossip heard in the grocery store, and a subject matter that we had no clue about came up in a public meeting, and somebody from the audience was pulled into it that is not an officer of the 4th of July committee, granted is a member of it. And it really sounded like they were being dressed down, that we had violated procedures. And we just want to make it clear that we have violated at no time any procedures. If you look at these contracts, both of them from last year that were used inside by the town in all cases, have the two major issues, that they have to sign a contract, that they have to provide insurance, and that they have to be aware that the contract is between them and the town of Ashland, and that it is signed, sent to and signed by the town of Ashland. It was being presented that we had been engaging in contracts.
I think you misinterpreted what was said, Fran, but point taken. We did clarify that. We just wanted to make sure that we didn't get into that position. I don't think there was any accusation on the part of the board, so I'm sorry you took it that way. But we got some assurance that nothing was being done that was improper, so.
In the future, if somebody could pick up the phone and call us, we could answer it and it'd be in the book.
We can only speak as a group, yeah.
Or you could ask the town administrator, do you send us?
Well, it only came up because it was in conjunction with discussion about the 150th, and we just wanted to make sure we weren't going to get into another pitfall. And so that's why it came up. It wasn't anything that we were planning on talking about, it just happened to come up in the course of conversation.
Our contracts are much tighter.
We understand that.
Professional than has ever been done.
We appreciate that.
That's good.
The other issue is it was, a comment was made about that, well, you decided to stay with the town, you had an opportunity that you could go off on your own. You have to understand that there was, you know, rules of order, and you violated it. Clearly made it sound like we had gone off on dandy.
No, we were not even addressing the 4th of July.
I can pull up, and you can see for yourself.
We were speaking to the 150th, not the 4th of July.
This was added to the 150th, and it was specific to the 4th of July, that you had the opportunity to pull out.
All right, that's your opinions, and I don't agree with you, so can we move on?
Yeah, let's, let's...
Let's not get into it back and forth.
We appreciate your contracts.
I'm not going to get into it back and forth, but I just want to make clear, do you not want us to be part of the town? Because if you do not want us to be part of the town, we will go elsewhere.
We need to discuss the certain key issues that need to be clarified. It's not a question of whether we want you to be part of the town. We love this ceremony, this celebration, we don't want it to go away. We just want to make sure that it's done completely by the book, because we don't want to get into any kind of trouble. And one of our issues is insurance at this point. And I know this is not new, but let me read to you a letter that we got from Primex, our insurance provider. "Our liability coverage generally applies to the town government entity, which is a municipal corporation under New Hampshire law. It also applies to the town's officials, employees, and bona fide volunteers serving official government functions. The coverage generally applicable to them is, of course, subject to conditions, limitations, exclusions, et cetera. The coverage doesn't apply to any events or activities as such because it is written to defend and indemnify protected persons/entities from suit. An event naturally can't be sued. The coverage also does not apply to private persons, businesses, or nonprofits, which, of course, you're not. But we want to make sure that there is appropriate coverage for this committee, whether it be a part of the town or under some other 501(c)(3) organization, because there's some level of discomfort that the insurance isn't appropriate just under the town's Primex policy." Now, Charlie, you've had, it does say that, to the extent a town official or employee had some connection to this particular event and were sued as a result, then our liability coverage may respond to defend them, subject to the terms, conditions, exclusion, limits of the liability coverage document. But, you know, we get into injuries from fireworks and all that other stuff, and it makes me very, very nervous that we are not properly insured for that.
Events not insured.
It's insured, yeah.
The whole reason why the 4th of July committee was under the town was that one assumed you were covered, and that's not really the case.
That needs to be resolved.
It doesn't mean you can't get covered.
No, it doesn't.
The key word is governmental. You are not a governmental unit of the municipal government.
If they're under the...
No, they are not governmental. Governmental would be...
So that's what I'm saying, it's a little bit murky.
It's an event.
And we need to get clarification, because if this insurance isn't sufficient, you're going to have to get some additional coverage, because...
So why are we hearing this for the first time tonight?
Because we just got it. We just got into it. I just got this letter today. So, because I knew you were coming.
You want a copy?
I wanted to read it.
We have copies, Charlie, I think, just like two weeks ago.
Okay, well, I just got my copy today. You probably sent it out earlier, but you just gave me a printed copy.
He also sent us copies of additional insurance that we can purchase for, it's like $40.
Okay. Okay.
I haven't seen that.
Oh, that's good.
And so, again, we just want to make sure that it's all in, you know, cast in stone and covered. We don't want any liability for any of you or for any of us.
In addition, I've also contacted a private insurance company to see what their interpretation is and what they would do.
Okay. All right. So, those are the issues, Kendall, that we just want to make sure everything is in order, so we don't come, you know, find ourselves somewhere down the garden path and say, "Oops, I didn't know."
The common stream of thinking was, if it was on-town property, you were covered. And there's been quite a bit of discussion for the past probably six or seven years. And Primate says, "That is not true. That is not true."
Well, if you could...
I think we could have a little bit better discussion with Primate.
Yeah. And if you could work that all out and come back to us with some assurances, then I think we're fine. Then I'm comfortable knowing that you guys are insured, because I don't want, you know, like in the past, we've been very lucky, very lucky, because I don't think that this issue was really explored or addressed in depth. And so, it's important now that we do it, because again, you guys are doing a great job. We're not trying to kick you out of the town or anything. Please. But we just want to make sure that it's all done properly. We're all covered. Okay? So, if you could do some more research, Kendall, and get back to us. And so, we have it in black and white that we're covered. That's going to make us a lot happier.
And I greatly appreciate the committee being picked up and all the attendance.
We are working very hard, and we're trying to be very much more professional.
I know. And it's fantastic.
We've increased revenue, but we just don't want to be blindsided.
Well, we don't either.
Despite the discussion that we were not aware of.
No, we have it all.
Let's not go over that again. It was all just sort of, it happened quite unplanned.
We'll get it finalized.
As you may have heard and as you have seen, as is in a minute, we are greatly changing what we've done in the past around the ballpark this year to make it a much better event.
Yep.
Great.
And if you have any questions or concerns about that, please let...
We certainly will. Just keep us apprised of what's going on. That's all we ask.
I do have a question from a previous meeting.
Sure.
Banners.
Yes.
There was some discussion about the banners down at the ballpark.
Yep.
If we would be able to use those. Something for you to think about around the ballpark area for advertising.
Put it in a document, document, and send it to Charlie, so we all can see it at the same time.
Yeah. There was some discussion. We've got a committee forum that's going to start looking into more of a permanent solution to our banners.
But that's no problem.
Nothing has been decided yet.
Fourteenth July is fine.
But we have to make our decisions when we all meet like this.
Yeah. And we won't have anything definitive on the other banner situation. Wait till after that.
Communication is the key.
So, we'll send a proposal to you about those banners in that area.
No, that's a good idea.
Directing parking and so forth.
Yep.
Oh, I thought they were celebration banners.
Oh, oh, just temporary banners.
These are only temporary.
Oh, that's no problem.
They're going back dropping.
He just said directional. I'm sorry.
These would be directional banners on the telephone poles about, you know, parking ten dollars over here.
Oh, no.
All right.
Food banners.
I think banners is the thing to hang off the telephone poles.
If you remember last year, we had them on the ground.
He's talking about telephone poles too.
Remember last year, we had them on the ground in front of the ballpark?
Yep.
We would like to put them up on the telephone poles temporarily during around that week.
I'm sure we can work something out.
You mean to celebrate, just to clarify for Kathleen, you mean the celebration ones on the telephone poles are temporary, and he's talking about parking is separate, so they're...
No, no.
No, no. What I'm talking about is, last year, down on the roadway, we had little roadside banners that said Pancake Breakfast, July 4th, 7:00 a.m. Parking, $5.
Can we call them something else instead of banners? That's the confusion.
So, we were thinking of putting directional banners up higher where people see.
Oh, I thought they meant, like, Fourth of July banners.
No, no. So, instead of down, up.
But that would be cool, too.
Right.
Okay. I'm sure we can work this out.
Yeah, that's fine.
We have a meeting tomorrow night. We'll send a proposal to you.
Please. Thank you.
The only thing I'd like to add is while you're dotting your i's and crossing your t's, if you're speaking to an insurance agent, see how you're covered or not covered when you're incurring the use of this property.
Yes.
Because if you're not under the almighty umbrella of the town, then just make sure you're covered.
Yeah. Because my understanding is the town doesn't, not the town, I'm sorry, the school doesn't allow anyone other than a governmental unit.
Or town committee.
Yeah.
To use the property. Yeah, yeah. That's what Harold's saying.
Right. What I'm saying, it may be an additional coverage that you're going to have to incur.
Yeah. We actually have talked to the school. I say you, and they told us, "Don't worry about it. You're all set."
Now, get it in writing.
We do have it in writing.
But you need to give that to us, so we can have it at the town office.
Susan, I see you waving your hand badly down there.
Do we have a file for Fourth of July?
Talking telephone poles, you have to talk about...
Okay.
They're the ones who are large, and the technicality is you're never supposed to put anything on them.
Yeah.
Good point.
Right.
All right. Talk to the electric department.
No problem.
Okay. Good. Thank you. All right. Anything else? All right. Keep us posted, and good luck, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, if I could ask the planning board to come join us.
Am I just sitting here, right?
It's just a work session. Just sit wherever you want. Want to bring up some chairs?
Bring chairs up.
Sure.
Is Paula taking minutes for you guys?
No, she's here for water and source.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, we have to have a discussion on permit fees, so that we can come up with a consensus here and then take it to a public hearing. All right?
Oh, that's right.
That's right. So, we have a list here of permit fees. Does this...
Yes. There should be two pieces.
Yes, there are two.
One is current fees. That's what looks like this.
This is current fees. Okay.
Yeah. And then the other one is the proposed.
The one with Tatsy's writing on it?
I created something to help us.
I knew you wouldn't.
I know. She's good at that. Actually, I did this two years ago. This is totally updated.
I know.
Yeah. On the left-hand column, what I took is, I took those two sheets and put them on the one.
Okay.
So, in the left-hand column are current fees.
Okay.
And in the right-hand column are the proposed fees.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it can help.
So, anything that's in red is a difference?
Yeah. Red, there are two sections of red.
Okay.
What I did, the first, on the first row, current and proposed is residential fees.
Okay.
And where it says comparison underneath, I took a fictitious fourteen-hundred-square-foot house.
Okay, okay.
Computed the fee under current and under proposed.
Okay.
Because I wanted to see what was going to be the change. I didn't do that with everything.
Right.
But the next section, the next three rows are multifamily, commercial, and industrial.
Okay.
And again, comparison there, I did for those.
Okay.
I didn't do comparison, I didn't compute the differences on the others.
That's fine.
There are some big differences in some areas. Some things are not much different.
Now, these suggestions originally came from our building inspector. Is that correct?
Yes. And they are an exact copy of the rates that are in Tilton.
Okay.
I did pull those up.
And do we know how they compare with other towns?
I started to look myself.
I didn't make extra copies of these.
They're all over the place.
They are all over the place.
It's also, in some ways, comparing apples to oranges.
Of course.
How are they with their immediate income compared to Ashley?
Well, I looked at Holderness and...
I did. I didn't compare immediate incomes.
Can we cut back to the fee? The fees have to support...
Exactly.
The program, regardless of the size of your town or how many people can afford what.
Right.
If you're going to have a building inspector, because we have a building pose.
Right.
The program has to basically cover itself, because the idea statewide is that taxpayers do not subsidize private property owners doing something with their property.
Right.
So, if you're going to have inspections or permits for people to improve their house or a developer to build houses or whatever else, they support that whole effort. And it's not on the taxpayers to have it in our budget to say, "We're going to pay whatever we decide to pay somebody."
Yep.
So, you have to at least backtrack as to what these fees are intended to do, whether they're realistic, because they haven't been raised since 2007. However, they can't also just be randomly picked out of a hat.
Right.
Which is why, again, some towns have part-time or full-time or planning departments that underwrite some of the effort of an inspector being able to go out and do this kind of job. So, you know, in looking at some of the median costs of having an inspector, according to the Technical Institute, who has a program for training these people, the median for a full-time job with somebody who already is certified is somewhere in the vicinity of fifty-three thousand a year for a forty-hour week, probably with benefits and pensions and whatever else that comes with it. So, we have to go back. It's like, what is that we, what are we supporting in the way of how much, how many hours we need to do the job sufficiently, and what the going rate would be to have a professional doing that job?
Yep.
So, based on that, you have to say, "Well, what fees would support that amount?"
Yep.
Right.
Now, as you look at the fees, she mentioned that it's been since 2007, was the last time the fees were amended at all. When you look at our fees, our permit fees, the proposed permit fees, and when I started looking at other towns, you can play with all sorts of combinations of numbers.
I know.
And because you've got a base, you often have a base fee and a per-square-foot fee.
Right, right.
And you increase the base fee, decrease the square-foot fee, or vice versa, and play with numbers. You can go all over the place. There are some things on this that are very different. For instance, on the back of this page, on the sign permit, we have three rates based on residential, commercial, or industrial.
Yep.
And those types of signs and the square-foot parameters of those signs are all in the zoning ordinance.
Yep.
The proposed fee is based on, it looks like, the cost of the sign. And when you think about Tilton and the heavy commercial strip, you're going to get some extremely expensive signs.
Right.
However, if you ignore that part and look at the fees, twenty, forty, sixty dollars for those three levels, it's, they're actually a little bit lower than our three levels. But you've got to, but we would not, I don't think it would be appropriate for us to look at the cost of the sign.
I don't think so.
So, you see, some of these numbers are higher, some are lower.
Okay.
All right.
Mydean, under the certificate of occupancy, did we not have anything, current fee?
I don't, I don't think we have a fee for certificate of occupancy that I know of. I could not find it anywhere.
Okay.
Why would you get one without a building permit?
Yeah.
I mean, eventually, if you get a building permit, eventually you're going to get the certificate of occupancy, as everything is inspected. But as far as I know, I don't think there is a separate fee that we have.
Okay. Yeah.
I look at the, for instance, the cell tower fee. Ours looks, not that we've had any more than the one.
Yeah.
But if someone else were to come along.
I heard rumors that another one might come in.
If someone else were to come...
I think we ought to up that one.
Yeah. If another one were to come in place, I can see our permit of seventy-five dollars may be a little bit low.
You need to add a zero to the number.
But however, you've also got to understand that with both cell towers and wind turbines, the criteria that they have to follow before they even put anything in place is very strict.
Yes.
And all of those expenses, even with both of those, there are tremendous lists of requirements that they have to meet. And those are all at their expense, not the town's expense.
That's right.
So, keep that in mind, too.
Okay.
I have a question for you folks. On the front of the page, where you have your costs for your new buildings, I've seen something very similar a few years ago from Bristol. And their industrial new construction was the biggest increase, whereas you guys have it at the lowest, because you would think that when you have a building that's substantially larger, it could be an incurred cost that could be kind of blended in a little more. You have that as a forty percent increase, but then your multifamily homes, you have it as a one-hundred percent increase. And your regular home, you have it as sixty-three percent increase. So, it's cheaper to build industrial than it is to build a house.
However, how much industrial space, industrial zone space do we have?
I know. So, don't you want to get as much money up in the A's?
But we're not likely really to get any. I don't know.
If you're going to do the March, your minds will be right.
But you're right. There are some towns that reverse. Some towns, residential rates are higher and industrial are lower, and some towns reverse. It's a choice.
Yeah.
That's part of encouraging what kind of development you want.
Yeah, right.
And what you have space for, and what you have zoning for.
Now, for instance, Plymouth, I was looking at Plymouth. Their base fee for residential and non-residential, their base fee is twenty-five dollars. Then the per-square-foot fee changes. For residential, the per-square-foot fee in Plymouth is thirty cents per square foot. For non-residential, it's only twenty cents per square foot. So, there's...
Yeah. Well, let's say, rule number one is, we're never going to make everyone happy.
Right.
We've got to stop. We need, and I think Susan's point is the key.
Yeah.
You know, where are we vis-à-vis supporting our needs with a building inspector? And I don't think we're there at all.
Susan brings in about eight grand.
Yeah, well...
Well, I mean, that is, to at least...
Twenty, twenty grand for the position.
That's why you gave us that.
But I guess you could say that some of that twenty goes to total enforcement.
That's the, this is a list of all the permits that were issued during 2018. I know some of you have them. You've got them.
You've got an error right here in line twenty-nine. That's an empty driveway permit.
Yeah. This comes to us as is. So, I don't know. Other than, that's what it is.
Yeah. So, even this would be an analysis of where most of the time is spent, what type of permit, and what kind of level of building, and how many follow-up inspections there should be. And those follow-ups, especially with new builds or renovations, who you'd think would be the professional ones, that somebody who is licensed in plumbing or electricity would be the one doing that follow-up.
Yeah. And we don't do that currently, do we? We don't have electrical and plumbing inspectors.
He supposedly handles them all, but I don't know if he's licensed in those areas.
I don't think he should be doing them then.
That's another problem.
You know, this is kind of making my hair hurt, because it's so complicated.
It is.
But I wonder if, at least for the first pass, we ought to go through these section by section and look at what our current is and what the proposed is, and see if we're comfortable with that or, you know, want to make some changes. Again, we can't compare it to every town here, you know? And I don't want to get into that game of upping the square feet. You know, I think we need to come up with something that's going to support proper building in this town. That's what I think. So, can we do that as a starting point and see where we got?
Sure.
And maybe some of them, we're happy with what we've got. But let's just take residential, single-family. Our current fees for new are fifty dollars plus ten cents a square foot. They're proposing a hundred dollars plus fifteen cents a square foot. They're proposing for alterations, thirty-five dollars, I mean, our current is thirty-five dollars plus ten cents a square foot for alterations. They're proposing fifty plus fifteen cents per square foot. And repairs, thirty-five and ten, and...
And there are some things that don't quite line up.
That don't quite line up. Yeah, that's where it gets...
And that's, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. They have accessory structures, which I think is appropriate, because we don't have that.
Although, on the proposed, it's additions and alterations are together.
Okay. All right.
So, here's a question. Accessory structures, does that include everything above eight-foot by ten-foot that's taxable building, or anything?
According, all I have for the proposed, all I have is the information that was on that sheet. I don't, I can't interpret it. I don't know anything.
Yeah. Because I know the RSA is, if it's below, I think it's eight by eight or eight by ten, it's non-taxable. That's why I asked, because it just...
In our...
Accessory structures.
As far as taxable, I don't know. But in our regulations, in our building regulations, anything under eight-hundred-dollar value does not require a permit. That's permit. Taxing, I don't know.
Taxes is different, and that's up to the...
But I'm just saying, you want them to goose and gander, you want them hand-in-hand, you're trying to rewrite the book, you might as well have the chapters lined up.
Well, I think the taxing is based on what the assessor...
Yeah, yeah.
I had a free shed. They told me it was worth three grand, so throw that right out the window.
Well, that's difference of opinion between yours and theirs, I guess, but we can't get into that, because we're not assessors. That's why we have hearings and abatements. So, is there anything on the proposed that seems out of line, or does it seem okay?
I think it seems okay.
I do, too.
I think it's fine.
Now, if you put in, you know, an example, a comparison based on a certain square footage, and with the new fees, it would be a sixty-three percent increase. And given that it hasn't increased since 2007, I don't think that's outrageous, especially since we have been supporting our operations with fees.
Now, just keep in mind that the few comparisons that he did, I did not use every variation.
Understood.
For instance, I didn't do a comparison on an addition or alteration.
And that's why...
So, whether that's going to be the same percentage increase or not, I have no idea.
No, I understand that, Mardean.
Yeah.
All right.
I think it would be slightly less.
Yeah.
It would be similar, slightly less.
All right. So, is everybody comfortable with residential?
Yes.
All right. Let's go to residential multifamily per unit. And again, they have, it's the same price for new alterations and repairs as it is for single-family currently. And same with commercial and industrial, seventy-five dollars for commercial, a hundred for industrial. The proposed fees are based on square footage. So, anything over a thousand square feet, a new building addition, alteration, or repair, would be three hundred dollars for the application plus twenty cents per square foot. And under a thousand square feet, a hundred dollars per application plus twenty cents per square foot.
Now, notice, when you start comparing, as Susan said earlier, sometimes you're comparing apples to oranges.
I know.
Because our residential, single-family, under the proposed residential, it says one or two family.
Uh-huh.
Our multifamily would be, our current rates, residential multifamily would be anything over...
Anything.
Yeah. So, definition, so not everything is easy to compare.
If our minimum size is seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, and there's not going to be too many that are going to be a thousand or less.
You're right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Because every dwelling unit has to be at least seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet by our regulations.
So, how do you, how does everyone feel about that?
I'm fine with that.
We're looking at, basically, everything being three hundred dollars.
Yes.
Whether it's residential, commercial, or industrial.
Right. I think that's fine.
Planning board, you have thoughts? I know it's our decision, but I want to hear which I think is.
Well, I also, I question upping repair levels to that amount of money if somebody is going to re-site or re-roof or whatever else.
Yeah.
This is certainly a kick in the gut.
Yes, it is. It is. And that's a good point.
And it doesn't encourage people to do well by their home.
You're absolutely right.
Or seek a permit in the first place.
Or seek a permit.
Yeah, the new makes sense.
Right.
And you also have to think about what, you know, if you were to analyze the permits over this last year, and I haven't, I didn't do that, where are most of the types of things that we seek? What kinds of permits are most people doing?
Well...
There have been a lot of alterations and repairs.
If we use our current structure, new alterations and repairs, we could do the three hundred for new, two hundred for alterations, and fifty for repairs.
Yeah.
Because Susan's point is excellent one.
That sounds good.
Thoughts?
Say that again?
Okay. So, we have a current structure of different fees for whether it's a new unit, an alteration, or a repair of a unit. And theirs, the proposed, is just basically for any of those. And over a thousand square feet is three hundred per application. And Susan's point, and it's an excellent one, is that you're going to discourage people from taking out permits to do repairs, and we want repairs done.
Or alterations or additions.
Yeah. So, I was proposing that we, instead of a three hundred fits all, we do three hundred, two hundred, and one hundred, or three hundred, one fifty, and fifty, or something like that.
Well, I'll be devil's advocate. If you stack it too high, all your valuations, your town is going to go down, and then your tax rate's going to have to be through the roof. So, if everybody lets their houses go to heck, because they don't want to pay money for a building permit, because it's through the roof, then the town's actually losing.
I'm not sure I understood what you just said.
If you make it so expensive to do alterations to a home...
No, exactly.
People are going to allow their homes to fall in disrepair.
That's why I was proposing, that's why I was proposing a hierarchy. Three hundred is too high for repairs. Three hundred is probably too high for alterations.
Yeah.
So...
But I mean, even if you go to two hundred, like you said, that's for residential, you're going from thirty-five to cheap.
Yeah. All right. Two hundred, one hundred, and fifty.
And then you're doubling the square footage.
You're right.
Yeah.
I think that's the main cost adder, is going to be that square footage.
Yeah.
Because it's over a thousand, you're double, even under a thousand, you're doubling per square foot for residential.
Right.
True.
So, maybe go point-one-five there and split the middle between those.
For the square-foot cost?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we're saying two hundred, one hundred fifty, plus fifteen cents per square foot?
He's saying two hundred is too high, right?
Well, this is a new unit, though. You have to get a permit for a brand-new unit.
Are you talking residential, commercial, or industrial?
Residential. We're talking...
So, this is assuming we're lumping them all.
This is, I'm talking about residential right now. Just residential.
Multi-unit.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I was basing my argument off, is that you're going from ten cents per square feet to twenty cents per square foot.
Yeah. So, if you do it fifteen cents, is that what you're proposing?
Yeah. I mean, it softens that load.
Yeah, it does.
But the base is still...
Yep.
So, Fran, you're saying two hundred for residential, one hundred and fifty for commercial?
No, 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 no. I'm doing alterations and repairs. I'm only looking at residential.
Oh, okay.
We haven't done commercial yet.
So, we are splitting into different ones?
I think we still should, yeah. Because I think if you're doing a commercial renovation, you can afford to charge a little bit more.
So, are we going to keep it at fifteen cents per square feet for all three?
I don't know. We haven't gotten there yet. Let's just...
Because, okay, because I was saying fifteen to split the difference was assuming they are all the same. But if we're going to split them, then we can change it.
Okay. I mean, again, we're not going to get very many industrials, so we can keep I mean, again, we're not going to get very many industrials, so we can keep it at twenty cents. We're not, we're just not going to get that many, I'd love it if they came in, but I don't think that's an unreasonable cost, what we already have.
Right, and I mean, I was just saying, you're doubling the residential, which...
Yeah.
Can definitely, I mean, because if you're doing, if we go with the proposed right now,
Yeah.
a repair is three hundred plus twenty cents per square feet.
Yeah, that's, that's way too high.
That's too high.
Way too high.
The other one was two hundred and seventy roughly dollars less, and half the square foot cost too.
Right, right.
That's why the resident, or the multifamily increase is much higher than the industrial one, because that square footage is the same.
Right.
Yeah, he's right.
Okay, so what's the proposal?
What, what did you say, Casey, your original, when you were saying?
So you're fifty fifty, something like that?
I didn't, I didn't say any base, base values, I was just going with the square foot.
Okay.
I think the base values, you could make whatever, as long as they're not outrageous for alterations or repairs.
Hundred fifty fifty.
Hundred fifty fifty?
Yeah.
Does that work?
Hundred fifty fifty, plus fifteen.
Plus fifteen cents?
Okay.
That would be...
Hundred fifty.
Hundred fifty and fifty.
Alterations and fifty repairs.
Plus fifteen cents per square foot on all these.
That would be a lot more reasonable.
Isn't that what we have right here?
No, we have fifty, thirty-five, thirty-five, plus ten cents a square foot.
So you want alterations and repairs the same?
Yeah.
But you proposed already one hundred fifty fifty.
We're, we're down here, Harold.
That was the residential, we already did.
I thought you just said you're on residential.
No, we're on residential multifamily.
Rewind the tape, you said we're on residential.
Residential multifamily, we already finished the top one.
Yeah, that's my bad.
Alright, does that sound good to everyone?
Yes.
Splendid.
Alright, commercial. I think that needs to go higher, like a hundred? But I...
For new?
Wait a minute, you're talking new commercial?
New commercial, hundred, hundred, hundred fifty?
Well, her proposed is three hundred, right?
I know.
Yeah.
Well, they're doing it by based on square foot.
Right.
So...
What was your proposal?
How about a hundred and fifty, seventy-five, and seventy-five?
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
So just doubling the new?
Yeah, and...
Keeping the fifteen or increasing that?
Oh, to twenty, the proposed is twenty cents.
I think twenty.
Okay, one fifty, 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 and twenty cents?
No, one fifty, seventy-five, seventy-five.
Seventy-five, that's what I meant, okay.
And, and then make it twenty cents per square foot.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Now, industrial. I'd make it three hundred, one hundred, one hundred.
Three hundred, one hundred, one hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yes.
And the twenty cents?
And, and definitely twenty cents.
Okay.
Thoughts?
It's adequate.
That sounds good to me.
Alright.
So keeping the same format that we...
Keeping the same...
Yeah, keeping the same format.
Yeah, yeah.
What was it, three hundred or...
Three hundred, one hundred, one hundred.
Just increase the, increase the new base again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Swimming pools.
We're assuming that's in-ground?
I don't know, there's one town that doesn't say.
Differentiate in-ground and above-ground, so...
How do you get square foot around?
They don't. It's just a flat fee.
And they have permits?
But I, oh, the proposed, I don't know.
Yeah, exactly, using math. You can certainly get square foot. It's not square foot, but you can get volume, so whatever, fifty dollars?
But they have permits.
Fifty cents?
Yeah, just fifty dollars.
Fifty, I agree with you.
So keeping the same fifty dollars?
Yeah. Driveway permit is no changes. Does anyone think we're okay with that?
That's a, yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of, yeah, four other towns, New Hampton, Plymouth, Holderness, and... New Hampton, Plymouth, and Holderness are all twenty-five dollars for driveway.
Yeah.
Uh, Rumney, the only fee that I could find in Rumney was the driveway, and that was twenty-five dollars plus a bond.
I see. A bond.
Wow. Yeah. That was dead gorgeous. Yeah.
Because they don't have any building licenses.
They don't have, yeah, that was the only thing.
If you don't have any building licenses, you don't know what you're going to get.
Okay, electric permit. Again, different structure.
Structure, yeah.
Yes, different structure. Now, our, we have the same grades for electrical, plumbing, heating, and demo.
Yeah.
Same grades and same, uh...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Categories.
Yeah. I think demo is way too low.
Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, our current one is way too low.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That stuff is, you don't...
I'd, I'd make it, um, a hundred, a hundred and fifty, two hundred, or something like that.
It is, that's what she proposed.
That's, yeah, I would make it, well, yeah.
Oh, accessory you'd raise?
Um, no, actually, the accessory structure looks pretty good.
I think they're all good.
I think they're all good.
On the proposed side.
On the proposed side, yeah.
So, commercial and industrial, you're wanting to get there?
Commercial, I think industrial should be a little higher. Commercial should be a hundred, industrial should be two hundred.
Well, under proposed, you're...
Kevin was saying, proposed doesn't have industrial.
There's no industrial.
I know, but we could put that in.
Okay.
So you want to raise the industrial to above the two hundred commercial?
Yeah.
Um...
To three?
No, no, two hundred is, I think it's fine.
So match those two?
What would the...
Okay, match it with the commercial?
Match it with the demolition permit that they have over here, but add industrial at two hundred.
Okay.
So industrial, I'd say we're both two hundred?
Yeah.
Again, primary structure, accessory structure, I think that's good.
Yeah, now, because our town's kind of going through, trying to go through revitalization with the industrial, is there anything that you can think with the demolition of industrial that we should think about requiring a bond, or is that something that's within our grasp, or within our grasp? Just because of the proximity of some of our larger structures to riverways? I think that might be something that would...
That I have, that I have no way of answering.
That's a whole other topic.
Allison has his hand up.
We have some hands in the audience.
I don't know.
Yes, Mr. Badger.
All costs have to be incurred by the, so, if there's a demolition plan, uh, you have to have a way of... making sure they do it right.
That's exactly right, but, but...
So a bond is not out of the question.
It's not, but this isn't the issue, this is just the permit.
This is a permit.
This is just a permit, and a bond?
Demolition.
Yeah.
It was brought up that you have a demolition permit for industrial.
Yeah.
Bond would be part of that permit.
Okay.
Should be.
We don't have anything like that in place.
Because when you have a mitigation that goes bad, who's covering that?
Yeah. Well, I think we need to, we need to explore that, but it's probably nothing we can figure out tonight, because it's an important issue.
Kind of separate.
So, it, but, but it's, it's something we definitely need to keep in mind.
And I think you need to probably talk to Public Works too, because you're talking, with any demolition, you're talking disposal of materials.
Yes, yes.
Right, so I think that's part of that conversation.
Alright.
So if you go back to the electric, plumbing, and heating?
Yeah, right.
Those two have, used to, are supposed to have some sort of follow-up inspection.
Yeah.
So those follow-up inspections should at least reflect...
The time.
Plumber is usually about a hundred dollars an hour.
Yeah.
So if you had a deal with a plumber as to what's the average inspection time? I mean, it depends on a new three-story house with five bathrooms versus going into an alteration and...
Right.
Whereas the electrical one that I had, it's like, okay, let me see it, and I said, there's where it's plugged in, and he got his forty dollars for seeing that someone was plugged into the wall. Yeah.
Tale I guarantee.
Alright.
So where are you at with the electrical?
We have, we haven't... We just started to review, we skipped over to demolition. I, I would agree that they're not high enough.
Well, again, if you go to new, or even alteration, then you're guaranteed that it's supposed to have at least one follow-up inspection.
Right.
By somebody who knows what they're looking at.
Yeah, so, so the way they have it is a little bit more transparent, because they talk about new, and this one just says residential, it doesn't say if it's new or, or a repair.
Right.
So their structure says one-two-family residential new per unit, one hundred and twenty-five. Residential addition, alteration, or repair is fifty. That makes much more sense to me.
Yeah, now, on the sheet that you got for the proposed,
Yes.
there was two little handwritten notes on the side,
Yeah.
and I couldn't read it, so I asked Charlie what they said.
Okay.
Now, the one at the top says, this application covers electric, plumbing, and mechanical when completed. The note down at the bottom, opposite the electrical, plumbing, and mechanical permit, says, that note says, these fees are for applications done separate from building permit. I don't know whose comments those are.
Okay.
The Tatsis. The Tatsis, right.
And I, yeah, so I don't know whether, I mean, that's a process, okay, I don't know.
So what you're saying is that if it's a new building, you only get one permit?
That's, that's my interpretation of what that says.
Yeah.
So even if you have to do electrical and plumbing, you're only paying for the new building permit?
Yes, yeah.
That's what it looks like.
Well, that's, it's, essentially, that's what we're charging, forty, eighty, a hundred and twenty for all three, and they're just lumping it into one as a hundred and twenty-five. Does that sound okay? Does to me?
Me too.
And with fifty dollars being for an alteration or repair?
Yeah.
You know, a new, new construction would also be somebody inspecting that the construction itself is up to code and that things are, you know, you have your banisters at the right height and all that other kind of stuff. That has nothing to do with electrical plumbing, which is also inherent in, in any kind of new construction.
Right.
Would those be things that are under kind of the heading of certificate of occupancy? Because I recently had a building built, and I had to have the fire department come in and give it its stamp of approval for those things.
Right, life safety.
Right, life safety. So would that be something that you should put under the banner of, with your certificate of occupancy? That it's up, up to snuff? I mean, you're right, it's not one of those three professionals, but it needs to be taken care of.
Yeah, again, that certificate is supposed to say that it's livable and meets today's code or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, the way they have it is, you get a CO, but it's, the cost is included with your permit fees. But if you don't have a building permit, I don't know why you'd be needing a certificate of occupancy if you hadn't had...
I know, it doesn't make sense.
No, so, anyway. So are we happy with the, um, the proposed on this one, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical?
So what would be a new application for that that wouldn't require a new building permit?
If someone, I don't know, if someone were replacing electrical in a room?
Isn't that an alteration?
That's an alteration, but I'm proposing you buy an old home, and I have somebody that did that that had no electric in it.
The new electrical...
And so they had to get the whole thing wired, that's all new. I mean, I'm assuming here it means for new construction, but it is possible, because I have a relative who bought a house that had no electric in it, and he had to have the whole thing wired.
So my question is, when there's a new construction, do they have to get a permit for the electrical?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely.
I think that's what it's been, yeah, yeah. So why, so, again, I don't know where these notes came from,
I don't know either.
whether these are suggested, or whether those notes are what's done in Tilton, which is where these proposals came from.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know.
That's a good idea.
But I don't know, I know it is.
Yeah, let's ignore it.
But I don't know, but I don't know if that's how it's been or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, then I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Because the note made it seem like they were the same, and you only need one.
Yeah, yeah, I, I...
I'm fine with it.
We should discount that, okay.
So if, so we only have residential and commercial, are you going to do the same for industrial there too with commercial?
Yeah, so I think so.
What are you doing?
We're going to go with the proposed, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical.
Okay, yeah.
Um, with...
Oh, okay.
Now, the sign permit, I mean...
They went, they went with this, proposed, all this proposed.
Yeah.
And then demolition permits.
And with the difference in cost, the, the three cost ranges under commercial multifamily?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would assume the cost reflects square footage, because again, if you had a one simple box of a house, as opposed to some stories and lots of wiring all over the place.
Right, well, I think it's, it probably related to square footage, but the, the overall cost, if you're putting in four thousand dollars worth of electric, that's probably reflective of the size of the house, of the amount of work you're doing.
And then on demolition permit, I think you just added industrial?
Yeah, yeah. So, I think we're fine with septic system review?
We don't do it.
We don't do it?
Mm-mm.
The state does it.
The state does. Oh, then never mind, okay.
Quick question on the estimated costs?
Yeah.
Is that just something that the person filling out the permit estimates?
Yeah, probably they get it from a contractor, whatever, they'll get a cost.
Okay.
Yeah, I would assume. Um, do we do a re-inspection fee?
Well, up till now, it seems like that's either supposedly inherent in the different permits, or the overall building permit that you get your occupancy certificate when...
Yeah, yeah.
That final inspection is done.
Okay.
So whether it's been used, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
No idea.
Okay.
Just leave it inclusive.
Leave inclusive, okay. Cell power.
Oh, go with the two fifty.
Yeah.
Okay, that works for me. Wind turbine, we don't have any... How much?
Ten thousand dollars.
Two thousand dollars.
Don't need any.
Well, I wouldn't put it at ten thousand.
That may be something to research.
Maybe, okay, let's leave it for now.
Definitely.
Alright, let's leave it for now. Alright, anything else?
Well, that's more than they've had since two thousand and seven.
Yeah, no kidding.
Well, alright, thank you, Planning Board, for your comments and your hard work.
Yeah, a lot of work.
And we will schedule a public hearing.
Sounds good.
Wasn't as painful as I thought it was going to be.
Were the general comments different on the proposed?
See, obviously, you've had permits lately, because I had nothing to base any of this stuff on.
So if you scratch our words, it says meeting with Ashland Electric.
Because the general comments over here doesn't say anything else, starting work without a permit.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
Because that's pretty big if you double it.
Yeah, that's a good one. Uh, under general comments, they have a fine for starting work without a permit. It's equal to double the review and permit fees, I, I like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So include those comments.
And expiration.
I don't think they heard, did Susan and Marty hear you?
And the expiration too.
Yeah.
Can't just automatically, can't just start a permit.
All right, no, I'm just looking at the one, fine for starting work without a per, without a permit.
Brian, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
What happens if I do a repair on my roof and I want to put new shingles on? Do I still get that fifteen cents per square foot charge? Just for putting new, I want to upgrade, you know, my shingles are rotted.
Yeah.
Or I put vinyl siding on my house, because my clavos are rotted. Do I still get that fifteen cents per, because that's going to add up a lot.
You're about twenty-five thousand square foot on a good sized house.
Now, under the proposed, he had exterior replacement of siding, windows are ruined.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Just fifty dollars.
So it wouldn't apply?
Wouldn't apply.
No, you're all set.
All right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Put one up at a time, one clav up at a time.
All right.
One shingle.
Yay.
Next.
Good job, Lynn.
Next topic. We're having a board of selectmen meeting with the Ashland Electric Commissioners about the Thompson Street Road Water and Sewer Reconstruction Project. The electric commissioners are not here. They have invited us to their meeting next week. Steve Foley was ill and he couldn't make it, but they are, the electric commissioners are not here. But I think in any case, we did a lot of work last week and we want to just review and make sure we're still okay with what we came up with. Dave, I think you sent out something to everybody?
I did.
Okay.
Eli has copies.
All right, can you come up here?
No, we're not on the agenda.
Yes, you are on the agenda.
I just scratched it out and wrote in water.
It says Water and Sewer Reconstruction Project.
Yeah.
Just for the, for the public's information, we, the board of selectmen, met with the Water and Sewer Commissioners with Steve Foley, who's the superintendent at the electric department, and with DPW to discuss the Thompson Street project. We approached it with the belief, the knowledge, that this project is a critical town project and must be done at some point, hopefully sooner rather than later. So we put together a bunch of information, factual information, not opinions, because there's a lot of opinions, in terms of.
Paperclip. And pass them down.
Okay. Can I have one, please?
No.
Okay. In terms of.
Paperclip. And pass them down.
Okay. Can I have one, please?
No.
Okay. In terms of. Yes, I know, I'm looking for my sheet here. In terms of what the project will do, why do we need the project? The SRF loan and, and information around that, how we will pay for it? Can we do the project in phases? And how much have we already paid? And what if we don't do it this year? So we were trying to get some meat around that skeleton so that we could print the information for the public. We had a very productive conversation, and, and as I said, we had Steve Foley there who gave us some information from the electric department, and unfortunately, they are not here. You know, this has to be a town project, because it, Water and Sewer desperately needs to be repaired. The, the street is beyond horrible, those streets. Craig has talked about the wear and tear on, on our DPW equipment. It's concerned for safety, for fire departments, police vehicles, besides the residents. The road cannot be paved, it cannot be patched. Craig has tried to, you know, put in patches, and because the road is so old, the patches do not hold. The road was never engineered. It is the oldest paved road in town. It used to be the main road, I understand, before they put in Route Three. It was never engineered. It has to be engineered, you cannot build a major roadway, you cannot, without engineering. There have been comments made that we could do it with less culverts. Please understand that this loan was based on stormwater. Drainage is one of the critical things on this road, as you saw with the sidewalk thing. The DOT was very concerned about drainage. The DES is extremely concerned about drainage. The water runs down that entire hill, all along Thompson, across Thompson, erodes the road and eventually makes its way to the river. You cannot do it without doing proper drainage. So it is a critical project. It is expensive. It's never going to get any cheaper. You cannot do it in phases unless you spend probably twice the amount of money. But in any case, you take out a loan for half, you've got to take out another loan for the other half, and now you've got loan on loan. Doing it in phases makes no sense. It is expensive. But what we have done is really taking a hard look at the tax impact. Is, was this your work, Eli?
This is Dave's work.
Dave, do you want to kind of talk about the tax impact here?
Well, I, I put together some sample figures, because we had, you know, Water and Sewer's taking out a one and a half million dollar loan. We were granted a one and a half million dollar loan from DES. And so we got the loan pay, loan repayment schedule. This loan is for a little bit more, but I, I use those figures just to get some idea of what the tax impact on this might be, and how much of, how much the town would be paying of this loan, and how much water and sewer would be paying of this loan. And I think there was confusion at the SB two about, about this, and that's because this is confusing. This is an SRF loan. The SRF is the state revolving fund loan that is granted by NHDES. And on a twenty-year loan, which the town is, is thinking about doing, the payments, the payments each year decrease because the principal decreases. So we're charging you interest and fees on the remaining, the remaining, the remaining principal. So in the first year, if this were a one and a half million dollar loan, the payment would be a hundred and eight thousand, and the tax impact would be about thirty-four cents. Thirty-four dollars per a hundred thousand dollar house. In the last year, the payment is sixty-five dollars. So each year, the payment steps down, and as the payments step down, of course, the tax impact steps down too. And in the last year, the tax impact would be about twenty cents or twenty dollars on a hundred thousand dollar house.
Now, if you recall, at the SB two, there was a lot of questions about what it's going to cost the taxpayers, and we were unable to put a number on it, and this is exactly why. Now, these numbers reflect the tax impact if we ask the taxpayers to pay that total payment. One of the things we have discussed and will be committed to every year is to offset that amount of payment with our existing capital reserves, with the highway block grant. We will do what we can to reduce that payment and thus the tax impact on any given year. But it will change year to year, it'll never go up, it'll go down. And I can only speak for, for this board, and future boards, I'm sure they'll want to do the same thing. We have, you know, put away a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars every year into our road capital reserve. We can't deplete it all for this project, but we can certainly put some of it toward it, because we have other roads to maintain. And as I've said, once these roads are done, our capital reserves that we have nicely funded for the last several years will keep our, all of our roads maintained. This road cannot be just paved, it has to be reconstruction. And it's been on the top of the list for a long time, independently verified by LRPC. You know, I know that there's been some question, because I live on one of the roads. You've got to understand that my part of Smith Hill's not even going to be touched. They're not even going to touch it. It's the, it's the roads.
You're off the road, you're not on it.
Well, that part of the road isn't even on the plan, so I can speak on behalf of the town's need. This is a desperate town need. I can't be passionate enough about this. And putting it off, it's only going to cost more. Now, DES is going to be imposing their rules and regulations. They're going, you know, we don't know if they're going to let us get away with this engineering plan in a year from now. We don't know that. Not trying to scare people, but we don't know what kind of loan we're going to get another year from now. We're very lucky to get this SRF loan, and we only got it because of stormwater issues. So, let me just go down through this list, and everybody, this is all the stuff we, for those of you who weren't there, that we, we put into it. The question of what will the project do? Well, it's going to reconstruct the road from the foundation up. Thompson Street is six thousand seventy-four feet long. High Street is five hundred and fifty-six feet. Smith Hill, one thousand thirty-nine feet at the intersection of Thompson. Again, the top of it where I live's not going to be touched. We got to replace and recon, or reconstruct stormwater, drainage, and culvert systems. You know, it, it is in bad shape. We have to replace the water line from the Civil War Monument to River Street. And I've been told by Water and Sewer that that, those water lines go zigzagging, they go across property. We've already had a main break a year ago because of the frost heaves and the way the road was constructed. That's just a more trouble waiting to happen.
And the pipe sizes are all different.
Pipe sizes are different. We have to replace the sewer line from the monument to the Latulip property, whatever that address is on Thompson Street. It's not the Latulip property. Fifty-four Thompson Street. Why do we need the project? We need to protect the Squam River and the wetlands and existing infrastructure. We need to protect town equipment, plows, fire engines, ambulances, police cruisers. We need, we have to watch out for public safety, cars, motorcycles, pedestrians, and cyclists. We need to protect private property. This water runs over private property. We need to save money in the long term. Like I said, it's not going to get any cheaper, it's going to get significantly more expensive. We need to improve the water quality. We need to remove water lines from private property and where the ledges are. We need to improve fire protection. I hadn't thought about this, but if those lines are not adequate, you're not going to get the pressure in the fire hydrants, and so this is going to improve fire protection. We need to restore the manholes. We need to prevent infusion of stormwater into the sewer system, which has apparently been a problem. We need to replace non-reparable road service. And as I said, Craig has tried to patch it, cold patch it, they don't hold. We've got huge potholes because the stuff just goes away. And we need to replace old water piping and clay sewer piping, it's ancient.
One thing, I was talking to the PD today, that you could also add to this, is when our roads are in bad shape like they are, it affects the public safety response time.
Response time, very good.
Yeah.
You know, especially Thompson Street, you mean, you can only imagine a PD trying to respond to a call going fifty miles an hour.
Any, any emergency.
They're not doing that, you know, they're just not.
Excellent, excellent.
It's really difficult when our infrastructure, those roads are really in bad shape for them to respond.
Yeah, and also police cars, that's not specifically mentioned here either, that should be added also, because, you know, we're due to replace one.
Definitely. Anything else you want to add to this? We talked about the SRF loan, Dave very nicely put this together. We can put in the numbers based on our figures, but this just shows you that the tax impact isn't nearly as bad as, you know, people were throwing around thirty-four cents every year. That's not the case.
No, and another thing about the SRF loan is, Dave mentioned this at the meeting, is that we don't have to pay, the first, the principal loan forgiveness can be used as the first payment. And generally, the reason why it is is because.
No, he says no.
No.
It's not really the way they, what they do is, they take, on a one and a half million dollar loan like this one, the principal forgiveness is a hundred and fifty thousand, or ten percent. They subtract that from the principal on the first year. Well, you still have to make the first year's payment.
Still have to make payment, but it's.
Interest only.
It's less, and they also charge you one percent interest on the first year. After that, the interest rate drops on a twenty-year loan to about twenty-seven oh four percent. So the interest rate is, is also less, and that's why there's a big drop from the first year to the second.
Yeah.
So that's part of the, that's part of the complications.
Yeah, okay.
So what, what that does is, that allows you to set up, like you said before, your financing.
Yeah, exactly.
So you can technically reduce this tax impact, you know, because it's eighty-four thousand dollars, but that's under the assumption that that's not doing anything with our total budget.
Exactly.
So for example, we generally in the past ask for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for road improvement.
Yeah.
You know, maybe we drop it down to seventy-five.
Right.
Now, your total budget is down. So you're taking really from here to reduce it over to here.
Exactly. Without increasing your tax rate.
Without trying to increase the overall budget.
Right.
Also, one thing we didn't speak of is you have your unanticipated fund balance, so if you had the choice, you've got to a point where you're even keel with the payments on the end of this. Schedule the day, and so I don't think we provide it to us, you just go bam, it's paid.
Exactly. There's multiple ways to look at it.
And there is no.
Prepayment penalty.
There's no prepayment penalty? That's, that's beautiful. And there's no closing cost, so this loan is a dream, I mean, really. How will we pay for it? Well, we just talked about the payment schedule, and again, this is worst-case scenario, because we will offset these payments to some extent every year with, with our capital reserves and our unassigned fund balance and our highway block grant or whatever seems appropriate for any given year. And so that's what's on here. So our payment options are capital reserves, unassigned fund balance, highway block grant, DPW operational budget. Can we do the project in phases? Well, there's a cost, we have the cost without phases and a cost with phases. They provided a cost with phases, it's significantly more. Staging a loan to bring in all the equipment is extremely expensive. If you've got to stage it twice or three times, you're adding that right off the top, not to mention inflation, cost increases, you know, pavement increase, everything goes up, nothing goes down. So phases is costing the town significantly more. Additional loans might be required, additional NHDES requirements, there might be new permits, cost of repairs to existing road, which is what we're doing now. And the cost of repairs includes not only cold patching it, which doesn't work, but the wear and tear on the DPW vehicles, and having to repair water and sewer lines, and they've already had to do that. And again, increased interest.
And engineering.
Engineering, engineering, right.
Would be affected also, and might have to go back and have a part of it reengineered, and we don't want to pay for that.
How much have we already paid? Well, the town has paid a hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred in engineering, and Water and Sewer has paid twenty-one thousand eighty-three dollars. And so what if we don't do it this year? Well, like I said, no guarantees about what's going to happen tomorrow, let alone next year. We've talked about potential Water and Sewer breaks that cost them a significant amount of money. The town, the road was closed last year because of a water main break. The continuing expenses that, for the repair of the trucks, the interest rates could go up, will likely go up. I mean, who knows? This is the only thing that we can assure, is what we've got now. Now, the big question that came up with the electric department, and this is obviously something we need to take into account, is there is a cost to replacing poles. We committed to them, working with them, hand in glove, to figure out a way to make it a win-win. Those poles have to be replaced someday anyway, because they're all way too old. You know, they have financial issues, we're aware of that. That's why we wanted them to come here tonight, but we are committed to, you know, helping them with the cost to make this a fully town project. And we, and I have every confidence that we can get there, but.
Very good presentation.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Can you tell I'm passionate?
I think one thing that wasn't.
There's a couple of more things on that, if we don't do it this year.
All right.
We have to compete for SRF.
All right.
Yeah. That's right.
There's really no guarantee that we are being awarded that.
True.
We've been lucky, we've got it twice.
Yes, we've got.
If we voted down twice, they might not be so kind and give it to us.
Yeah, we might be at the bottom of the list.
If you have to go out for a bond, and you go to the New Hampshire Mission for municipal bond act, the interest rate is much higher, there are other fees, there are.
I don't like that principal loan forgiveness.
Yeah.
There's no, yeah, there's no loan forgiveness. And basically, the loan forgiveness on this means that most of the interest that you pay is, is really forgiven. So it is the best deal that we're going to get under, under the circumstance. We know that NHDES is, is tightening up its requirements, especially on stormwater, because of the increased severity of storms and the inadequacy of drainage throughout the entire state, not just in, in Ashland or Thompson.
No.
You know, we get fifty and a hundred year storms every two or three years, and as you know, that creates havoc during the road. So putting this off is only going to cost us even more money. And, you know, yes, we have a choice to put it off, but we cannot put it off forever.
I think we've already put it off.
We already have it off.
Eventually, the project has to be done, and.
We will be forced to do it.
We will be forced to do it, and it will, it's going to be cheaper this year, it was cheaper last year than it is this year. It's cheaper this year than it's going to be next year. So we have the, because we put away capital reserves and because we increased the unassigned fund balance, we have the flexibility to lower those payments, lower the interest rate on, on the loan, and still keep our good roads good. So because we've done all those things, we're now in, in a, in a pretty good position to take care of this road without a very large tax impact.
Craig, would you like to add some comments to this?
Well, I think it's, you've said it all. There's not much more to add. I think one thing you probably didn't mention is fire protection. I think one thing you probably didn't mention is fire protection. The hydrants up there, you know, I don't know when the water main was put up there, but I don't know if it's a six-inch water main, but the inside of it is probably only two inches. So, there's not really much water pressure up there if we did have a fire.
Yeah, thank you.
Which, any, any one of the houses, it's hard to put out a fire without water.
Yeah, true.
So, you know, you can rely on a six-inch water main and get as much water as you need. And it's down to two inches, because if you ever cut a pipe like that, and the water and sewer can tell you, it's not really six inches inside anymore. It's down to maybe two inches.
The internal diameter.
So, that's one thing that wasn't mentioned, but it's a good point because it's fire protection for everybody.
Yeah, absolutely.
Water is a big part of helping people get their trap, get out, and, you know, it's, it's public safety all overall.
Absolutely.
That adds value to your home.
It does add value to home, yeah.
It would, it would make our ISO rating better to have hydrants all the way up and down the whole road and higher flow rates.
Right.
I think one thing that we didn't touch upon, at least one statement that I've been kicking around in my head since we had our meeting down at the utilities building, is that Superintendent Foley had stated that Circuit Number One is Thompson Street. Everybody's electricity goes through Thompson Street if you're downtown. So, you may have the thought that, you know, it doesn't affect you, or it doesn't affect, you know, my neighbor. But really, if you're out of power, it includes Thompson Street and those antiquated poles and those antiquated lines. Your electricity reply, it depends upon it.
Circuit One goes all the way up to Albrook.
Albrook, all the way down to Depot Street. I mean, that's, that's the majority of the people that live in this town are on that circuit, because as Fran stated, it was the main road. It was the first paved road in town. Everything was laid off of that. That was the original road. So, these are things that we need to consider. I mean, you could be on the other side of town, and a pole goes down. You're eight miles away or seven miles away, and you don't know why you don't have electricity, you know? Superintendent Foley had stated they wanted to rework that during this project. So, these, these are things that everybody needs to be involved in.
Thank you, Harold, I appreciate that.
Yeah, good point.
So, again, the cost is high, but the cost of doing nothing is significantly higher and is really not an option. So, we are going to put this information together. We're going to put it on the web. We're going to put it out, flyers available for everybody. I believe that Donna Rhodes said she was going to do a story, and we need to push that and make that, I mean, we need to get that information out there because it's become an emotional issue. Money, cost money, my taxes are high. They're high, okay? I pay them too. But the cost of doing nothing is so much worse.
We need it out there before election day.
And if we have a disaster out there with, with a broken sewer line or water line or fire that we can't put out because we don't have the water pressure, or if somebody asked about suing, you know, maybe it wouldn't stand up in court, but it would cost us a lot of money defending it, even if we couldn't win the case. So, there's just all kinds of reasons to, to get this thing done, and I can't think of any reason to not do it myself, but...
Well, we're a community, and a community, we have to pay...
We do.
To have a community, because it could be, it could be my street the next go-around. And I know how I feel if I heard people say, "Well, I don't drive on that road. I don't care about it."
Well, we have to protect our infrastructure as number one.
Absolutely.
Or you don't have a town.
Town, we don't. We can't, we don't live in, we do live in individual homes, but we have to take care of the community as a whole.
We do. And again, I'm very sorry the electric commissioners could not make it here. You know, they said that we haven't kept them informed, but we are, you know, trying our best to include them in this very painful discussion because they are a part of this team, and we want their input.
In the grand scheme of things, they're the least, they're the least expensive part of, if you think about it.
Yep, yep. All right, any other comments? Thank you, Water and Sewer Commissioners, and for putting all this information together. We want to also prepare a presentation, again, just for the public, have it filmed once we get this all together, and we want that done, obviously, before the election.
All this has to be done before the election.
All done, and I would recommend we don't do it on a regular board night, but some night, we'll, we'll have a special meeting just to present all this stuff one more time. So, we need to come up with a date.
Yep, we only have two weeks.
Man, which reminds me, guys, be prepared to sit out another election. Okay, any other new business? Okay, hearing done. Yes, what? Oh, yes.
Tony Randall, Chief Brown's vehicle.
Yep.
Purchase replacement.
All right.
Can you do that under new business?
We can do that under new business.
So, go right ahead.
You want to come over here? Chief, you want to come over here so that the camera can be on you?
Oh, yeah, that's all.
Go ahead.
Okay, okay. I come to you tonight so that I can get permission to, or authorization to move forward with replacing the 2011 Ford Expedition that was put into service in 2010. The thing has served us very well. If you look at the sheet that I gave you, we priced out two different vehicles, the Ford F-150 and the Dodge Ram 1500. We're going to the truck rather than another Expedition for more versatility with the vehicle, for being able to put bikes and stuff in the back of the truck. It just, it's going to work out a lot better. A lot of police departments are going to them because they can fit more stuff in the vehicles.
Yep.
So, if you look, I spelled out, we looked at the F-150, which had a price tag of $32,767. They were going to give us a trade-in for the Expedition of $5,500, which would put the cost of the vehicle at $27,267.36. The people from the Dodge Ram, the cost of the vehicle was $28,490. They would allow us $3,800 for the trade-in, and the total cost of doing the Dodge Ram would be $24,690, which is a better price. With the problems that we've had with our Fords the last couple of times, I really feel a need to move away from them. And as you can see, it's cheaper to go with the Dodge than it is the Ford F-150. You'll see that the total cost of outfitting the vehicle would be $20,690, and the total cost of the vehicle with the outfitting would be in the range of $45,380. I'm asking to have this taken out of our capital reserve. Currently, our capital reserve has $51,680.51 in it. So, I would like to start moving forward with this. The Expedition's getting tired. I don't want to put any more money into it if I can help it and just be done with it. If I could get the Select Board to authorize me to move forward with getting the vehicle and outfitting it, I'd be greatly appreciative.
Just a quick question, Tony. This is going to, you know, really pretty much wipe out your capital reserve minus, plus what we put in this year, assuming that passes. Are you going to need a vehicle next year or...
No.
Okay, all right.
We have a couple of years before the next vehicle. That's why, you know, and I haven't done my, my letter to the editor yet explaining to the people to vote for it. If they don't vote for it, it's really going to put us behind again. And I've worked my whole career here, the 10 years...
Having the replacements.
Getting this set up.
We never had.
It would be a crushing blow to...
It would be.
To what I've tried to, and hopefully, the people will find it. We did knock it back a little bit, but I think we're, we're in a good spot. We're not, it's not drained. If need be, if they don't vote for it this year, then we, maybe next year, the capital reserve jumps up an extra 10 grand or something.
Yeah, okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but you have, what, two, two more years before you have to replace the Alvis interceptor, right? You have 2022.
Yeah, I think we got two years. I think we have two years left.
Remember, you told the Budget Committee.
And so, I think we're in a great place, really. Finally, it took me 10 years to get there, but...
You did, but you done great job because we didn't have that plan in place before.
No, we certainly didn't.
From a budgetary standpoint, I'll just give you a little opinion. I've always been a Ford guy, but I'll tell you this Dodge, I'm looking at it, and I can speak to this MDS system that this has. It's a multi-displacement system. So, when our vehicle is idling, it'll actually be operating on less cylinders.
Nice.
So, you'll be saving fuel line.
Well, that's good.
So, they actually brought one up and let us test it. We had a Dodge Ram at the police department for two or three weeks. Ford didn't offer us anything.
Oh, wow.
So, that was part of it.
The other need for this is, these guys are using their own truck.
No, no.
When they shut down the bike and stuff like that.
No, it makes sense.
Well, this would give you the opportunity also, if it was ever in the town budget or went to vote for one of those flashing radar signs like what Holderness has, or, you know, if you need a bike rack to the back without digging up the interceptor. It gives you flexibility that this town's going to need.
Sure.
Oh, absolutely.
I'll make a motion to give our Chief of Police, Anthony Randall, permission to take $51,600.
No, 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 45,380.
Oh, 45, sorry, that was a, that was in the, 45,380 from the capital reserve fund to purchase a Dodge Ram 1500.
I'll second said motion.
Any further discussion? Follows in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you. We're also working on a grant for a radar and camera system.
Excellent.
Oh, nice.
Which doesn't reflect the DSO, it could be even cheaper than that.
Okay. Cheaper's good.
No, it is.
All right, thank you, Tony.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I wanted you a new floor, too.
All right, any other new business?
Yeah, I'd like to.
All business. Do you want to do this tonight, or you want to save this for next week? It's getting kind of late. Can we save the updates for next week? The project list and the updates?
No, next week.
I mean, the next meeting. The next meeting.
Is there anything that you feel is, if you need to get out there to the public before 70, before the election?
Good way to put it.
Because the next meeting is 70 before election.
Yeah. Is that yours? That's Charlie's.
That's Charlie's.
Well, you can have that.
Oh, okay.
The only, the only thing that's really here that I can comment on is the L-Chip grant. We did get an extension for that.
Okay, good.
L-Chip wrote me a letter. I think it's the end of the year. The other thing...
What'd you say?
L-Chip got an extension.
I'm just thinking of the end of the year.
To the end of this year?
Oh, nice.
Well, I don't know if it's nice enough.
That just puts off the things that we want to do.
I know.
And then the other one was the feasibility grant. I'm not getting much feedback with that one, so there's concerns on my part that the grant amount is too low. So, I contacted CDFA, and by state law, they can only give out that amount. They're working on their end to try to increase it. Apparently, that hasn't been increased since 1970.
Oh.
Wow.
Yeah. So, I've reached out to nonprofits to kind of start to see, well, what can we sort of do?
Okay. Well, good.
Good.
Keep us updated. All right, we have one Select Board item. I'd like to read this letter. This is a letter to Ashley Walrasson.
Okay, so, do you want to give an update?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, Ashley, we came across, has been accepted to West Point. Which is a very prestigious place. It takes a lot to get into the West Point. They don't just, I think the acceptance rate is under 10%. You have to have a letter from your senator, your congressional, you have to be recommended, I should say. So, and Patsy came across that this in the paper felt that maybe we should acknowledge this special...
So, this is a letter that we should all sign. Dear Ashley, the town of Ashland wishes to congratulate you on your appointment to the United States Military Academy at West Point. Known for its demand of dedication, determination, and selfless service, West Point is careful in its selection of candidates. Knowing the amount of time, effort, and dedication it took to earn this appointment, it is clear that your addition to the long list of proud soldiers is well-deserved. We acknowledge your outstanding achievements, and we thank you for your service. On behalf of the residents of the town of Ashland, we wish you a safe, exciting, and successful career. That's really very exciting, so I will pass this around for signature.
If, if Donna Rhodes did an excellent article in the Record Enterprise front page last week, if, if you pick that up for Thursday, it'll explain all the details. Very prestigious.
Are there any other Select Board items?
I just have two really quick ones. If I could get a consensus, a couple consensus, if I could to, as we know, Select Board member cannot act on their own. So, I was wondering if I could have a consensus to make sure that I am the point person to attend the Electric Commission meetings as needed to be updated on the solar progress because they're supposed to be getting their questions together so we can have a roundtable hopefully next month. And I need to go and get a progress report if I could, or write them and get a progress report. So, I just need a consensus from the board that I can still do that, that I can go ahead and do that. And my other one that I'd like a consensus on is if another board member and I could work on putting together some RSA's to put briefly, briefly, put on the website our proceedings, how we, how we run our meetings, public comments, power of the chair, just some brief things